At this time, I will call the Wilmington Board of Selectment meeting of Tuesday, October 11, 2016, to order. All members are present. At this time, can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I would kindly ask that Slakman-McCoy lead us into this.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start right now with just making a brief announcement that as usual and customary in the month of October, all members of this board and the manager and Bev are wearing an article of clothing that is pink, which is in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is for the month of October. And as most of you know, as you drive around town, the Common is lit up pink, which was a generous donation from a Wilmington resident, which we are very grateful for that. So we will also be wearing pink again in the month of October, and we just want to honor all women and men that are dealing with this disease and their families. So thank you very much to everyone for doing that. So moving on to the transmitting of Treasury warrants 1414A, 15 and 15A. Questions, comments, or motion?
We move to grant the warrants 1414A, 15 and 15A.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes for June 13, 2016, which were tabled from September 26, 2016. Questions, comments, or motion?
Make the motion, have you got accept the minutes?
Motion's been made. In terms of the minutes, Mr. McCoys would clarify the minutes that were submitted with your edits, and then Bev also provided a package as well. Would your motion be to accept the version that was submitted by Bev Dalton as our recording secretary?
No, I would. It's good enough for now, yes. I don't have an issue with that, that's fine, yep.
Okay, so motion's been made, do I have a second?
So, yes, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'd just say, seconded the discussion, been on the board awhile. We have made amendments and inserts in years past, not a lot of times, but it has happened. Thank you.
The only additional comment, just to be clear on the motion that I just seconded, we're approving, I believe with the vote here, the insertion of the red text.
Correct.
Okay, which reflects the recorded tape, so yes, that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No further comments, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to our first appointment, which is a 7:00 appointment, I do apologize, we're running a few minutes late, with Sharon George, who is our town clerk, and it is regarding the open meeting law and the November 8 election. Good evening, Sharon.
Hi.
Do, ma'am, thank you.
I don't have a whole lot to say on the open meeting law, except that just the way that we've been doing agendas, we have to make sure that we're clear as to where the meeting is, what room the meeting is in, and all of that. And if we make changes to the agenda, it has to be called a revised agenda, okay? That's how the law wants us to be compliant, so it would be my recommendation that, you know, we follow this. The first agenda is the original one, and that's posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting, which you all do, Bev does. And if there are any insignificant changes, like a communication comes up or something like that, then we have to add that communication, but also add the word revised and put up a second agenda, okay? So basically, and that also, next year will be the next round of online ethics testing that will start in December and run through the, probably the middle of April of 2017. Okay, does anybody have questions on the, through the chair, Judy, if anybody, any questions?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I talked with the manager, and I understand, you know, the first order businesses with reference to, we did have a recent complaint, which is also further on down in the agenda, that the town manager will be reading that into the record. I certainly don't take offense to that, I understand, you know, in the spirit of transparency, I would certainly have no issue, just as a point of clarification, I mean, we did indicate that we were adjourning into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, and in the complaint it indicated, you know, that we did not state what union specifically or non-union that we were discussing. We were discussing, you know, dispatch, for example, should we be stating the actual union name? So for example, you know, the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 101 should be stated in that as a point of clarification, is what you're looking for.
Right.
So.
Exactly, okay.
So that was the nature of what, you know, will be later discussed.
And that should keep us compliant with the law, okay? The second thing that I wanted to talk about is the November 8 election. For the first time in Massachusetts, we're going to have early voting. And early voting will start on Monday, October 24, and it will run through Friday, November 4. We are going to be open two nights until 7:00 p.m., Monday, October 24, from 8:30 to 7:00, doing early voting, and on October 31. And I'm also going to open on Saturday, because the secretary's office really urged everyone, and they kind of threw an incentive out there, that depending on the number of registered voters that you had, if you opened on a Saturday, you would receive such-and-such money, as they're calling it, grant. And I gave the town manager a copy of that today, stating that we should be getting our $1,000 next week, and that's to offset any of the costs for the Saturday, October 29. So, and then Tuesday through Friday, we'll be here, 8:30 to 4:30 for early voting. I've designated Town Hall as the early voting site, mostly because we have a little bit more parking here during the day. There's children at the Boutwell and the Wildwood, and I'd rather not have to get into all of that. And so, everyone will come here if they wish to vote early. If they don't, we've already sent out close to about 500 absentee ballots so far, and we're still at least three weeks away from the election. On November 8, the times of voting will be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you'll vote at your normal precinct. The usual three precincts of being 1 and 2 is at the Boutwell, 3 and 4 is at the Wildwood, and 5 and 6 is here at Town Hall, okay? I think that this is going to be a very large election. The secretary's office is stating that the turnout could be between 80 and 85 percent. We have 16,704 registered voters. So, in 2012, we had 12,063 voters that came to cast their ballot, and at that time, we had about, close to 15,000 registered voters. So people are registering, and it's amazing to me how many people have sent in voter registrations, even people, they want to make sure they're registered to vote, and we appreciate that from everyone that has sent them in. The deadline for voter registration for the presidential election is Wednesday, October 19. So 8:00 will be open till that night. There's a lot of scenarios. We will have this three separate ballots that we've already gotten, our absentee ballots, they're making up a special, which we've received today also, early voting ballot that is different from the absentee, and will be different from the voting day ballot, so that there's no, you can't mix them up, each one is color-coded, which is good. And anybody that has recently moved to Wilmington, please come in either to the office to register to vote, or you can go on to the secretary's website at registertovotma.com, and you must use your license to do that. And there will be four ballot questions, every one, every household that had registered voters in it, I'm sure all of you should have received one of these. It has everything about the four questions that will be on the ballot, so voters should really try to read it before they come. We will have copies of it at the polling locations. Do you have any questions about the election?
Any questions or comments at all from any members of the board?
You mentioned on Saturday, October 29, you'd be open?
Yes, 9 to 1.
9 to 1. And that grant that you're receiving, the $1,000, does cover the expense?
Cover.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, all of it, they'll be left over.
Thank you very much, though, for coming in. Is there anything further?
Okay. And if the residents of the town have any questions, please call, please call the clerk's office at 978-658-2030. We're happy to help you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, and thank you.
Good night, thank you. Okay, moving on to our next appointment at 7:15, which is with Joseph LeBeau, who is our DPW Business and Utilities Manager. This is regarding the Automated Trash and Recycling Collection update. Good evening, Joe.
Hi.
Sure.
So, Joe, I'm going to give you the floor whenever you're ready, and just take us through at the pace you want to, and then, I'm assuming in the end, you'll entertain some questions and comments if.
Certainly. First off, thank you for having me, it's a pleasure to be here. As you know, I'm here to give a quick overview on the trash and recycling automated collection program. It's been in place for over a year now, so tonight I'll just go over the benefits that the town has received from that point. So, taking you back about a year and a half or so, the previous trash contract expired on June 30, 2015. So in anticipation of that expiration, we advertised receiving proposals. Upon receiving proposals from various trash and recycling vendors throughout the area, these proposals were evaluated, assessed, and the recommendation was made to award the contract to Russell Disposal, who coincidentally happened to be our recycling vendor at the time. So in place of solely contracting for recycling, going forward, they would, in essence, have the trash and recycling contract. Once that evaluation was made, we came in front of the Board of Selectment, the DPW Director and myself, presented the benefits at the time that we anticipated, and joining us during that presentation was Russell Disposal, a representative from Russell Disposal. Well over a year ago that occurred, and that night, the Board of Selectment unanimously voted to approve implementing the automated trash recycling program. So I guess that leads to the next question, how was that transition? I would say the first three weeks of that transition were what we expected. Prior to recommending this implementation, we had spoken to various municipalities, and they all consistently gave us the same feedback, expect a month, a month and a half, of not problems, but just questions. There's certainly a level of uncertainty that was there, and we did experience that. However, fortunately, I'd say within three weeks, the residents of Wilmington, it was old hat, it was like it had always been in place. So we were very fortunate in that aspect. Some of the calls we did receive were not complaints, primarily more or less questions on procedure, process, how do you dispose of white goods, how do you dispose of bulky items, which trash barrel is for the trash, which barrels for recycling. Questions we were certainly prepared to answer, and as I mentioned, following that initial three-month period, I think the amount of questions, complaints, inquiries has certainly, I'd say substantially decreased. Relative to the amount of collections that are made each week, the amount of calls we receive on a day-to-day basis is certainly very minimal. To put that into perspective, we have approximately 7,200 residents who receive residential trash collection. Add an additional, say, 4,500 or so that receive recycling each week, since recycling's every two weeks, that's over 10,000 collections that are made each week. On an average week, I think it's safe to say we would receive currently one or two calls a day. So if you look at it on a macro basis, in my opinion, that's not too bad. So what I'd like to do next is review the multiple benefits that the town has experienced after assessing its first year of the automated trash and recycling program. These benefits can be categorized, I would say, in threefold. Number one would be the aesthetic benefit that the town's received, number two, the financial benefit that the town's received, and number three, the environmental benefit. So starting with number one, the aesthetic benefit. As you drive around Wilmington, I'm sure you've noticed that the amount of trash and litter is not as apparent as it used to be, and that is due to the animal-resistant barrels. Another aesthetic benefit that you would see, and that we've received feedback from residents on this, is the neater, more uniform appearance of the neighborhoods. Moving to the financial benefits, you'll see that I handed out a packet with three charts, so that we can go through these, it's, they're more visual, as opposed to me sitting here and spewing off some statistics for you. So the first chart here, this is the town of Wilmington, tons of trash produced. So what you're looking at here is a historical representation, starting back from FY 2004 to currently, the line graph ends current day FY 17. If you look all the way to FY 16, you'll see that the substantial drop in tons of trash produced. What that is showing you is that from FY 15, the last year of trash that was picked up conventionally, to FY 16, the first year of the automated collection, you'll see that the amount of tons of trash dropped approximately 2,200 tons, which equates to 26 percent. To put that in a more relative, relatable basis, prior to the automated trash collection system, the average household, tons of trash, actually pounds per trash per year, is $2,400. So 2,400 pounds was disposed of for each house, prior to the implementation of the new program. Following the new program, each household averages 1,800 pounds of trash per year, so that's a drop of 600 pounds per household per year. Which leads to the next chart, which is why am I saying this, why is this important? The second chart you're looking at, this is a cost projection that we've put together, essentially comparing what we would have paid had we stayed with the conventional method versus what we're projected to pay with the new automated collection system. How this was done, each year, the town pays a tipping fee, which is essentially, per ton, every ton of trash that the town disposes of, there's a tipping fee along with that ton. So what we did was we took 86, about 8,600 tons from the last conventional year, and used that to project what we possibly would have paid had we stayed with the conventional system, including the tipping fee, of course. If you look at the second line, that is the automated process, the same procedure was used. We used the first year of the automated, tons times what the tipping fee would be for that corresponding year. So as you can see, after the first year, we saved approximately $139,000, conventional versus automated. And as you see going forward, the projection certainly seems comparable, consistent that there's a savings there. And as I mentioned earlier, the benefits received, you'll see, the third graph here was the town of Wilmington curbside recycling percentage. Starting back in FY 2004, to our current day, you can see there certainly is a trend, an upward trend, but it's nowhere near what we received this past year. From FY 15 to FY 16, it's a 10.3 percent jump, moving our recycling rate up to 27.4 percent, which compared to other towns, especially ones who have transitioned to this automated program, is consistently unsuccessful. And to put that again in a relatable term, prior to this automated system, each household averaged 500 pounds of recyclables per year. After the system is in place, they're averaging 678 pounds per year, so a gain of 178 pounds, additional recycling per household per year. Before I open the floor for any questions, I think now's a good time, especially to mention to residents, and to encourage residents, to visit our website, the DPW Trash and Recycling website. We're always available to answer questions and inquiries by telephone, but if we're not in the office, certainly check our website. It's outlined pretty well, we have a frequently asked question section, recycling calendar is on our website, which also, if you haven't already, in the next week or so, you should be receiving a recycling calendar at your house, we sent out the mailing, I believe, last Friday. Any questions related to how to dispose of bulky items, white goods, CRTs, which are old TVs, for example? Any questions on yard waste, leaf, curbside pickup, all these can be answered by checking out the town's website? And I think, most importantly, and probably the most informative, comprehensive resource we have on the website would be the instructional booklet, that's available for download. This was the booklet that was sent out at the beginning of the automated program, it's now available electronically for anyone who chooses to download, there's a wealth of information in that resource. With that, that's all I have. Any questions from anybody, be more than happy to answer them.
I would just jump out in front and just say, thank you very much for being here tonight. There's so many comments that I could make, just back from the beginning, this was certainly a mindset challenge for some of us in terms of, I don't want to speak for other members of the board, but for myself specifically, you get used to having the liberties of being able to essentially empty out your house on the curb and know that it's going to be picked up. So it certainly was a change, and I needed to change my behavior at home, and I have. And I certainly relied on your expertise and that of Michael Woods and Jamie and everyone in your organization to essentially advise us as to what's best for Wilmington, you know, for the short term and long term. And I definitely have embraced it, I've seen all of the benefits that you have articulated, I have interacted with Russell Disposal, they've been very cordial, been very responsive, have been very pleased with the service that I've received at my home, and my family has commented on it as well. I think the tutorials and all of the information that you put on your website is excellent. I also think that the work that was done with WCTV to try and get the messaging out as well, was also very positive as well. So I think you should be commended for this rollout, for a town that's used to doing things a certain way, and I can certainly see the financial benefit as well, which is obviously pleasing to see and hear as well. I think the times when you hear the most stress about it is during the fall, when there's the leaves, which we're going into that season, so I know that the manager will be talking about important dates, which will be the brush drop-off, as well as the curbside, so that's important. And then obviously during the holiday season, where there's more packaging and debris at home, whether it's holiday celebrations and/or gift-giving and things like that. So I'm assuming that's probably going to be the time where people are going to be deferring to you guys for some extra help. But I just want to say overall, you know, I'm pleased with what I'm seeing and hearing, and I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. So I'll open it up to my board members, if anyone would like to make a comment or ask a question or both, feel free to raise your hand, and I'm happy to call on you. Yes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I told the manager, I would always say it, I was very skeptical in the beginning about this, like anyone else, and obviously you've got the facts and numbers to prove it. I mean, being a people five adults living in one house, obviously I did spend the extra $35, probably the best investment, was it $35 for the second recycle? A $7.35, probably the best investment I could make, so I utilize that every week. And I've got to say, it's working, absolutely. I have to say, it's working, it's going good. On my way around town, I do see the recycling barrels out there, I see the blue barrels, I see the green barrels, and every other week the recycling, so it's working, you know, and I can say that I'm, hey, what else can I say? It's working, and I'm happy to say that it is, and I'll give credit where credit is due, and it's working. I'm sure it doesn't make everyone happy when it comes to big items, but evidently you can put your allow, and maybe it's a family secret, that you can put out one big item per week, so if people want to unload their garage, well, one big item a week, as long as they make the proper phone calls, it's being done. So I take my hat off to the town for a program that I think it's working fantastic. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, briefly, if I may. One question, then a comment, I'll start with the comments first. I echo almost word-for-word comments of Judy. I've had the occasion, on a number of occasions, to call Russell and have them come out on for the, for the big item pickup, and the people there, you know, you're calling a trash company, so I didn't have tremendously high expectations for tremendous customer service, but I got it anyway. They were very approachable, impersonable, and accommodating, answered questions, so listen, I think that so far, so good, they seem to be a very responsive company, and are performing up to the levels of our expectations. The other observation I'll make is, you articulated very well what I believe are, in fact, the three main benefits of this, you know, the aesthetics, as you drive down any neighborhood that has trash pickup that week, you see the nice neat barrels all kind of set up, and you know, it just, it looks better in the neighborhood and in the community, the wind doesn't blow them over, the stuff doesn't dump out on the street, so there's a certain, an appreciable, better look value to the new barrel system. Certainly the environmental, the increase that you've illustrated to us in how much recycling we are doing now by virtue of having a larger bin, and that really leads me into the question. Is there a mechanism that you're aware of that Russell or these companies apply to somehow go through that recycling, and I don't know how to ask this without, are people abusing that? In other words, is non-recycling material ending up in the recycle bins, and if that happens, do we somehow, do they make up for it and the charge back, or?
Yeah, as of this point, we haven't received any notification that the system's been abused in any way, really. It should be noticed, on each truck, there is a camera, so that as the barrel is unloaded, the driver has the ability to actually view
Okay.
what is emptied into his basin.
All right, cool, and I'm glad to hear that, frankly, you know, that speaks highly of our residents who understand the value of this program. So thank you for leading the charge, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Just, please. No, I just want to comment, a nice presentation, and
Thank you.
I agree with my colleagues on the board and their comments of what they said, and it seems to be working out fine, it's benefiting the town, and that's what, that's what really matters in the long run, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo my colleagues' comments as well, appreciate the nice presentation, and glad to see that it's saving the town some money, and I know at my house, we really have taken a liking to it, we definitely recycle a lot more now, and which is a positive, so thank you, and appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Joe, thank you very much, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into our communications, I'll turn it over to the manager.
Yes, Madam Chair, the first correspondence comes from Textron, and they're alerting the town to some significant downsizing, I'll just read this into the record, it reads as follows, "To whom it may concern, during the next several months, reductions in force will be occurring at Textron Systems Corporation, DBA Textron Systems Weapon and Sensor Systems at the Textron Systems Site located at 201 and 205 Lowell Street, Wilmington. There are approximately 200 employees currently expected to" There are approximately 200 employees currently expected to be affected at this site. The first separation from employment is expected to occur on December 2, 2016, and continue through March 31, 2017. We expect the separation to be permanent. There is no union representative, and there are no bumping rights. If you have any questions or want additional information concerning this matter, please contact me at the telephone number provided." And the letter is from Rochelle Caposey, who is their Director of Human Resources. Next, under correspondence, is a memo from Tina Stewart, and this is about the Mass Memories Roadshow. The program will be taking place on September 30, 2017, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. And the program is really a public history project where they digitize family photographs and also offer the opportunity to residents to share memories about living in Wilmington. The goal of this program is to create a realistic picture of Wilmington based upon photos and material from family scrapbooks and the like, both reflecting Wilmington's past and present. Residents can have up to three photographs scanned and discuss the stories behind the photograph. This application was spearheaded by Charlotte Wood, the Assistant Library Director, and there were a number of other folks that were involved in lending support to this effort. Next is a correspondence from the Surface Transportation Board, and they're advising the town of a scoping session to be held on October 25, starting at 5:30 PM at the middle school in the auditorium. The Surface Transportation Board has determined that an environmental impact statement needs to be developed to assess the impacts of the possible NET project. The first step in that effort is to develop the scope of issues to be evaluated in this environmental impact statement. The town representatives will be attending this session, and we will also expect to provide written comments by or before the deadline, which is November 29. Once the final scope is developed, a third-party firm will work with the Office of Environmental Analysis, which is the STB's environmental unit, to complete the study, which will lead to a draft environmental impact statement. That EIS will also have a comment period, which is, yet is not known. One of the keys to this particular piece that's coming up on the 25th and the ensuing comment period is that we want to make sure that we have all the different issues presented to be evaluated in terms of environmental impact. Some of the things that definitely should be included in this scope are traffic impacts, potential noise impacts, impacts to groundwater and surface water. So internally and with our consultant GeoInsight, we will be looking to make sure that the scope that STB has is reflective of all the various issues that need to be considered.
Sorry, Joe. Judy, may I?
Yes.
Do you, Joe, do we anticipate EPA being present there, given that this is on the Olin Superfund site, or do we not expect that for this session that they would be present?
I would expect a representative from EPA. There's been a, a number of documents that have gone back and forth, both in the STB website as well as their environmental unit. One of the documents that was provided by Town Council was a, essentially an agreement that was entered into between the Surface Transportation Board and EPA, where essentially it's a cooperative agreement. EPA is in a support role to this effort that STB is taking. So I guess the short answer is I would expect a representative and would expect comment from EPA on the process.
Secondly, if I may, on October 25, at the Wilmington Middle School, it's described as a public scoping meeting. So just forgive me for asking stupid questions, but that implies to me that it's open to the public. So residents in Wilmington would be invited to participate.
Yes, it's not clear to me at present as to the exact format that the Office of Environmental Analysis will use. In some of these types of forums, there would be an overview of the scope that has already been drafted, and then the floor would be opened up for comment in terms of perhaps other issues to be considered. I don't know if that's the format in this case, but that's a common approach that's taken on these type of things.
Okay. And other than our discussion here this evening and this memo, is there an effort or any other communications outbound to alert the public to this event and to make them aware of it as it approaches? Today is what, the 11th, and this is scheduled for the 25th? Is this something that can be prominently identified on our town's website? Or, I don't know, I'm just trying to think out loud here as I say this, or just hopefully as I'm talking about it, maybe it's getting the visibility that it needs through WCTV and our press if they're willing to publish that?
Certainly we would expect to have it on our website as an important date.
Great, thank you, sir.
Next, under correspondence, is a letter from the MBTA Advisory Board, and it's referencing municipal elections to the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization. There are four open seats on this agency, each seat is uncontested. One is, is being applied for or sought by Framingham. They are seeking to occupy the Metro West Regional Seat. There's also a vacant seat that the town of Bedford is seeking as part of the Minuteman Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination. Somerville is pursuing the seat for the so-called Inner Core. And then Braintree is seeking the fourth seat for the South Shore Coalition. The voting, as indicated in the correspondence, is, there's a absentee ballot that can be completed by the chief elected official in each of the 101 municipalities that make up the MAPC. So what has historically been the case when these types of ballots have been put forward is that the chair of the board will, if they so choose, complete and sign off on the ballot. Next is correspondence memo from me to the board regarding the Open Meeting Law complaint. The complaint was actually submitted via email on October 3 from Patrick Higgins of Swansea alleging violations of the Open Meeting Law regarding the posting of the board's September 26, 2016 executive session. It also makes reference to the, one of the terms on the agenda, new business and committee reports. I have consulted with John Foskett from Town Council's office, and it is his recommendation that per a vote of the board, he can respond on behalf of the board. There is a 14-day response deadline, that's 14 business days from data receipt. Essentially, as Sharon covered a lot of this, but the, one of the points that I would just add is that going forward, I will make sure to reference when we're going into executive session, the particular provision within the exclusions under the Open Meeting Law that applies. So in this case, you'll recall that on, on the meeting of Monday, September 26, the board was going into executive session to discuss collective bargaining with regard to dispatch. So the appropriate provision in this case would have been Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A apostrophe 3, or subsection 3. So there's 10 provisions under the Open Meeting Law for which you can go into executive session. So clearly, one of those provisions is to discuss issues related to collective bargaining. So I don't anticipate any issue with that going forward. The issue with respect to new business and committee reports, Town Council is going to review that. I think there's some question as to whether there's any real issue with, with that language, because there is not, it really affords the board essentially an opportunity to offer comment on any issues that may have come up recently or may be coming up, and there's no votes taken with regard to those matters. But he's going to look into that and then prepare a response. The response is both to the complainant as well as the Attorney General's Division of Open Government. So later on in the agenda here, you'll see the, under board to consider, there's a request that the board designate Town Council to respond.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Pro, on that, just out of curiosity, because this is new territory to me, I don't know how long I've been on the board now, nine or so years. This gentleman from Swansea, how does this individual, A, I guess, become aware of our circumstance, and why does he care? And why are we getting a complaint from someone from Swansea? It just puzzled me.
That's a good question. I'm not sure, we were, a similar complaint was filed at the same time with regard to the school committee executive session that was held on this past Monday. So it, I don't know whether he has some connection to Wilmington or what basis, what the basis was, but for whatever reason Wilmington was on his list.
I mean, I would, I would say, you know, as a follow-up, everything that the manager indicated is 100% accurate. This complaint and the school committee complaint were sent over to Paul Roggerio, and it was forwarded to the town manager's office. So I don't know if it was in light of recent events that they drew a circle around various executive sessions and wanted more clarity as to what was being discussed. It's clear what we were discussing, which was the dispatch contract. I take no issue with putting in additional information in the spirit of transparency. The truth is, is that ever since I've been on this board, we've, we've basically had these agendas look like they have for that many years, in terms of collective bargaining and new business and committee reports. So, you know, I don't take offense to the fact that they want some more defining information. I'm happy to comply with that. You know, obviously, we're not discussing any school-related matters, which is not in our purview, and, you know, to the extent that we can share additional information for any Wilmington resident or anyone else, who knows if they were looking at the major news networks and doubled back and looked at, you know, public meetings to see how things were being, you know, presented to the public, and wanted to make sure that the public's interests were taken care of.
Thank you. Yeah, Judy, I concur. I want to make it real clear that as long as I've been associated with this Board of Selectmen, we have made exhaustive efforts to be completely transparent, and when we've had executive session, we've always done it, by my thinking, by the letter of the law. We come out into this room even when there's nobody else in the room. We come out, we open up our session, we announce why we're going into executive session now. If there's some, some language to be more detail-oriented, to your point, sure, certainly. And I don't mind the opportunity to, to improve upon our process, which I think we have the opportunity now to do. But I would just want to be real clear that I think our process has always been transparent, and we've never had the intent nor the desire to somehow use executive session privileges to conduct other business of the town. We always conduct the business that we say we're going to conduct in that executive session. So that was that. The other thing is, on this new business committee reports, I see on our existing agenda, that has sort of been removed for, in favor of a different line of text for that section typically. And, you know, I guess I get it, we've been using that language for, I don't know, a decade or more, I suspect probably substantially more. But the inclination might be that if there's new business to be discussed, it ought to be up into the agenda and itemized as what is that new business? So it has historically been an opportunity for us as members to give a commentary either about the evening's events, or maybe to talk about an event that took place in town. I think we will probably still continue to do it at that phase of the meeting. It might just be, in my opinion, maybe we remove the word, that's the phrase, new business, and just call it committee reports or something, selectmen commentary or something to that effect. Seems to me to be, to satisfy the need of being transparent while also giving some flexibility to us as members to have our voice heard. So anyway, I'm anxious to see what Town Council comes back with on that, on that line item. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just reiterate what was said by Selectman Shampoo, that the principal elements of the Open Meeting Law, in my estimation, have been followed, were followed on the 26th and have been consistently followed, and that is that the meeting has been posted, it's been referenced as executive session in this particular posting on the 26th. It actually referenced the intent being to engage in collective bargaining. It did not specify the unit, but it clearly said collective bargaining. The board did convene an open session, which is a fundamental element of the Open Meeting Law, and then entered into executive session. Also, another key element was stating the intent to either adjourn from executive session or return into open session, and again, that has, was followed on the 26th and has always been followed. So I think we've, we got it right, you know, 95%. We can certainly modify and provide more description with regard to the purpose, to the extent it doesn't compromise the intention of going into executive session. And with regard to the language here, I guess erred on the side of caution in using some language that actually was, is used in a posting by one of the state agencies that is an advisory agency to the Attorney General's Office. It's the Open Meeting Law Advisory, Open Meeting Law Advisory Council, I believe is their official title, but they periodically meet and they happen to use this language. So this, subject to Town Council's advice, you know, this, and certainly subject to the chair's desires, this may be modified, we may modify it back or modify it from here, but this was intending to respond to that concern that was raised about the prior reference. So I think in, at the end of the day, it should not be a major problem.
Okay.
Next is correspondence memo from me to the board with respect to the transition process in the Assistant Town Manager. So as, as all of you know, Kendra Amaral has announced her acceptance of the Town Manager's position in Kittery, Maine. Her last day with the town will be October 26. You know, from my perspective, I think it's certainly a great opportunity for her taking that, that next step, so to speak, in terms of being a town manager. It's clear to me, based upon my four years in working with her, that there's, that she is ready and able to perform that, that job. I think we've worked well together. She's been an incredible colleague in terms of so many issues that we've dealt with, whether it's been collective bargaining with the various units over the years, the budget process, you know, really helping us to bring more technology into town hall, so to speak, not only for technology's sake, but also, but primarily to provide efficiencies and effectiveness, both with the effectiveness, both with the departments, our internal customers, so to speak, as well as residents. In human resources, she's really been the point person on that. So, you know, I'm certainly going to miss her, but I think this is a great opportunity for her. In terms of the process going forward, I've asked five department heads to work with me in going through the resumes and coming up with a short list of individuals. We received something in the order of 43 or 44 resumes for this position. The deadline was last Friday. My expectation is to meet with the department heads who are going to be involved in this on, later in the week, come up with that short list, and then send invitations out for interviews, and expect to make an appointment in early November. So that's, that's the game plan.
Just wanted to add to your comments, Jeff, as I may, if I may, is that I certainly would echo the fact that Kendra has definitely been a very valuable asset to the town. I have had the pleasure of working with her, very specifically with the Yentile Farm Development Project, among a myriad of other things. And she certainly is ready for the next step and certainly is well-deserving of this new endeavor. And I certainly want to wish her personally the very best with that new position in Kittery. And as was promised, I think at Deb Cipriani's party, we get 20% coupons to the outlets in Kittery, so make sure we get more information on that.
Under Board to Consider, the first item is, I'm looking for the board to approve the collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated with Local 101. The Dispatch Group, just by way of highlights, this group consists of 11 members. The term of the contract runs from July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019. The cost for the first year is approximately $37,000. In year two of the contract, it's approximately $28,500, and then year three would be approximately As I noted to the board during our prior discussion, the base pay is increasing 2%, or proposed to increase 2% in each of the three years. A night shift differential is being added for those individuals that work from 4:00 PM to midnight, and that would be a dollar an hour, which is similar to both other contracts in town, as well as other dispatch groups in the area. And then from midnight to 8:00, it would be a dollar 25 an hour. Dispatchers who have EMT certification, they would receive a stipend of $350. I would just note that currently, we have two individuals that have those stipends. And as I mentioned earlier, I think it's advantageous to have dispatchers with that knowledge when they get that, that call with an emergency situation. We're also looking to bolster the training of new hires. And one of the efforts in that, to address that, is to designate a communications training officer. There's a program that individuals would have to go through on their own time and at their own cost to obtain the certification. And when we have new hires, the, an individual who has this certification would be appointed or designated to work with them and provide them with additional training beyond the four weeks of training that they receive from the Dispatch Academy. And also, equally importantly, is to evaluate them during their six-month probation so that, you know, to the extent that there are issues they need to improve upon, they can be identified early on and work with that person. So in those instances where one of these CTO officers is working on a shift with a new hire, they would receive $8 for that shift. So that's another element to this. And then the other piece of this is an adjustment to their step system. So there, in the first year of the contract, there would be a 2% adjustment to the set step system. There's a seven-step system with this group, so that adjustment would be made as well. So I would be looking for a vote of the board to adopt this three-year collective bargaining agreement with the terms described.
Okay, questions?
I'm sorry.
Good. Make a motion?
I'd make a motion as described by the manager relative to the contract.
Okay, questions, motions are made. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just to be clear, Madam Chair, that everything that the Town Manager just highlighted is exactly as we discussed in our executive session the last time we met.
Yes.
Very well, thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next on the agenda to, for the board to consider is a recommendation by Sharon George to appoint two additional election workers, and she is recommending Diana Wilson and Anna Raynon.
Questions, comments, or a motion to hire these two new election workers?
Move to grant the request.
Motion to make. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Then, next is, for the board's consideration, the December and January meeting schedule. As has been historically the practice, the board meets once in December, typically the middle of the month. The meeting date that I'm suggesting or recommending would be December 12th, which is the second Monday. The fourth Monday would be the 26th, which is probably not desirable. And then in January, there are, the meeting dates are the 9th of January and the 23rd of January, and it would be my recommendation that the budget presentation be made on January As you know, the practice has been typically to have the budget presentation as a standalone meeting.
Okay. Any issues with those dates?
No, so, I'm sorry. So you're looking at three dates in January, then, two regular meetings and your budget presentation on the third meeting?
That's right.
Okay.
And then moving on to the last board to consider, this would, I'd be looking for a vote that would designate Town Council to respond to the open meeting law complaint.
I would make a motion to have Town Council respond to the open meeting law complaint.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments? Seeing none. Okay, so moving on to this area, which is kind of new territory for the title, which is items not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I'm going to jump out front here and just comment on a few items, if I may, is had the pleasure, as my colleagues did as well, in attending Deb Cipriani's retirement party. It was a great time, a great turnout, and a fabulous celebration for a wonderful person who we were fortunate enough to work here at Town Hall as our Recreation Director for 20-plus years. Appreciate everybody on the board being there. I had the good fortune as chair in presenting her a letter of commendation from this board. And Jeff presented the Wilmington apple and also did a little bit of singing, so that was quite a treat. And I, I was very impressed with that, Jeff, so thank you for that. And then I know Selectman McCoy and I were in attendance for the most recent candlelight vigil, and I know some others were not able to attend for schedule conflicts, and you did let me know that. That was certainly a very well-attended event. It was sponsored by a myriad of different people, but most notably, the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition. And it was a very poignant event, a very meaningful event, and it brought a lot of hope and healing to a lot of people, and I was pleased to have been invited to attend that. And I look forward to further engagements regarding the topic of substance abuse and addiction and all that we can do on every level, whether it's in our school systems, our general population, with our veterans, with our elderly, and anyone simply stated that needs help. And I know in our last year's budget message, and I would anticipate a long-term commitment on, on the part of the town of Wilmington through the manager's work, to see that we are allocating resources and revenue to this, this area of need and concern. So I just wanted to state that publicly. And then lastly, I just wanted to make some comments relative to some recent events. I had originally come into tonight's meeting and was going to refrain from stating anything. However, there's been a tremendous amount of media presentation of events relative to our recent resignation of our school superintendent. And on October 3rd of 2016, the Town Manager did submit a press release out, basically conveying the chain of events that occurred, and that the Town Manager and at least one Selectman received an anonymous source copy of a state police report that was relative to Superintendent Delai. And upon receiving that, the Town Manager contacted Superintendent Delai, as well as Town Council, and myself as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and he also contacted our school committee chair, Julie Bressard, and provided her a copy of the police report information. As many know, the school committee had an executive session recently, and Ms. Delai came forward with her resignation. Since then, there's been a lot of media speculation and a lot of reports out there, and I wanted to let the public know that to the best of my knowledge, that no one on this board, including our manager, were aware of anything regarding the subject matter prior to that Thursday, September 29th date. I want to further state that since then, the departure, in my estimation, of Ms. Delai is very unfortunate for the children of Wilmington, the residents, and Ms. Delai herself. Wilmington has been through a difficult couple of weeks in terms of issues that have confronted the Wilmington School Committee. I continue to believe that each school committee member has the very best interests of the children of Wilmington in mind. While setting policy and overseeing a school system with over 3,400 students in eight schools, with teachers and support staff in excess of 425 full-time employees, is certainly no easy task. In my opinion, I believe it is important for each of us to move on and focus on the work of continuing to build upon a community that supports its residents of all ages and backgrounds, including our children. I believe the school committee plans to do just that when they meet tomorrow night to consider options for an interim school superintendent. There is nothing positive to be gained as a community by Monday morning quarterbacking the circumstances that led to the former school superintendent's departure, and I strongly encourage my colleagues on this board to use good judgment when commenting on these recent events. In my opinion, what's done is done, and I recognize, as most of you do as well, that the school committee has the responsibility for the operation of the school department and the appointment of the school superintendent. And I believe that we should, as a board, continue to support them in any way we can to move the education of our students forward in a positive direction and into the future. Thank you. So I'll open it up to my colleagues at this time. I'll start to my right.
I just want to congratulate you. I believe I, I read that you were going to be serving on a panel, Women in Politics?
Yes.
With the Lieutenant Governor?
Actually, the Treasurer.
Oh, with the Treasurer?
Treasurer.
Okay. Congratulations, hosted by the Transition Network of Boston.
Yes, thank you.
So congratulations on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to make a few comments relative to the episodes that you touched upon the last few weeks. And I know at the last meeting, Mr. Bendel had a prepared statement, and I have to say, I had to totally agree with Mr. Bendel. He was correcting his comments. And since then, unfortunately, the drunk driving charge relative to the superintendent. But I'm looking beyond that. I'm sure, like everyone here, even though we're not on the member of the Board of School Committee, we serve on the Board of Selectmen, where we receive phone calls all the time. And I know the town cry, it broke the story Sunday, and it was all over social media. I've got, I got several phone calls on Sunday. But what really touched me more than any of those phone calls was that I received two phone calls from two young girls that are students at Wilmington High. And each one called it one time in the morning, one a little bit later. And the first girl said, you know, Mr. McCoy, my parents told me, we'd like to call and talk to you. And I'm really upset at what's going on. But what really bothered me more than anything, I had a teacher that I really cared for, and the teacher's gone. And she told me who she was, didn't want to say on the record, I know the parents. And a little later, I got a phone call from another student, another female, going to Wilmington High. Pretty much the same thing. But, and it touched me. And I said to that student, I said, you know what I'm going to do? Sometimes you've got to learn to like, silence is golden. I'm going to go to that meeting Monday. Not going to chair, I'm not going to go in front of a camera, the reporter that's in this room. I didn't go up to him to do an interview. Well, all of a sudden, did do an interview with me, but I didn't go up. I stood in the background because I said, you know, I owe it to you. I'm going to go to make sure to see how this process works. And, and that's what I did. I stood up, Mike Suburban, three and a half hours in that one area, stayed out of sight, out of mind. And when the superintendent gave her resignation letter, basically stating she resigned, I stood in the background. When it was over, got in my car, and I took off. And I'm sure that some folks up here probably did receive phone calls, because that was the main topic. I know I talked to the Town Manager the following day, you know? And so I thought I owed it to those two students. And talking about teachers, you know, this is something that just didn't happen over the last couple of weeks. I know back in January 25th, 2016, the superintendent was here with the town clerk about changing the area relative to voting. And I know I made some strong comments, and I know relative to the minutes that we approved on page nine, I know the chair wasn't happy with that. And I don't need to touch upon that. I even go beyond that, where I've heard from teachers and department heads not happy. I go to myself, why are they coming up and talking to me? Why aren't they talking to the school committee? I don't serve on that board, you know? And some people confines, and I'll tell you something, over the past year and a half, I've been really observing what's going on. And I'll tell you, we lost a lot of good teachers because of that superintendent. I don't think everything's so rosy relative to that superintendent. We lost good teachers that went to other schools. We lost good department heads. And from what I understood, when she took over the reign, every single employee that worked in enrollment house under Superintendent Delai is gone, with the exception of the business manager. You know, I, I'm not talking about, you know, the last couple of weeks. I don't even, I'll put away the drunk driving aside, I'll put away her bringing, I miss all Terry back. I'm just looking at her performance. I mean, this woman has gone on social media, has tweeted, and had issues with students. This woman did not want to, I forget the gentleman's name, you could probably help me, the young man that was handicapped, wanted to graduate. She didn't want him to graduate. And so there was a big stink about it, and they went to a school committee meeting, and they allowed to do it, and the parents were happy. And I'm happy for that. You know, so everything was an all rosy with this woman. I'm a firm believer in promoting within. A lot of folks out of this town, as town employees, work in other district, in other areas of the year, schools. So I do take issue with that. And I've got a private joke with somebody I call from time to time, and I've been around town. And I got to tell you something, I drove by, and I would keep an eye on her spot, superintendent. And I'll tell you, she seems to be outside the district more than she was in the district. You can see in her office that big light bulb, and you can see when she's there, that's on. When it's off, she's not there, okay? You know, and I have joked, somebody called, oh, the car's not there. I would really love, when this is all said and done, that we instruct the Town Manager, I would like to make a motion when that time comes, to have, to basically do an audit to see how many times she is in the district and she's out of the district, and who she's going with it, how much does it cost in the town. I know I did talk to some members of the school committee over a year and a half ago. And everyone says, oh, yeah. What I'm just telling you is that.
I just want to remind you that she's no longer working here.
No, I know that.
So we don't need to do an audit.
But you know, I understand that. But you know, I'd be curious to see where our tax dollars gone. How many times has she been in the district and gone? I would really, when the time comes, I'm going to, I would hope to think, make a motion, or we would at least instruct the Town Manager to have either our town accountant to take a look, and take a look, do an audit, look at the books. How many times this woman's been out of the district? How much money has it cost us? She's gone on a lot of seminars. I've talked to members on the school committee, and I ask those questions. Well, I think it's fine because she, you know, goes, and it's really good for the school and this, you know, and, you know. and, you know, I'm a taxpayer. We're all taxpayers. You know, I mean, you know, it's not a magic credit card out there, you know? So, and I know I haven't, she hasn't been a big fan of mine. I haven't been a big fan of hers, and I'm not afraid to say it. And it's well beyond. Forget about what's happened over the last month. I'm looking well beyond when the woman got the job. I also hear, when she graduated college, she never taught a classroom. She went and tried as administrator. I mean, none of you like us giving the chief of governors the job and say, you're the chief. But meanwhile, he never was a police officer. Of course, he's a police officer, and that's what you did. Or you're a dishwasher, and you work yourself up. You know, you gotta understand.
Mr. McCoy, I just wanted to try and help you bring it back to order. I understand that you have very firm opinions, and I'm not trying to discredit that. I really wanna try and refrain from personal attacks towards someone that isn't in the room. I'm certainly not defending someone's behavior. I don't condone certain behavior that has unfolded. I certainly have my opinions, and I think certain things could have been handled differently by the school superintendent. You know, she did not get to the place in her life by accident. Just for the record, there was an entire public process that was followed for this. It was over a period of several weeks. It was all done in open session. There are seven members on the school committee. Two of them were not able to participate in the process. They consulted at least three firms to make the decision as to who they hired for the school superintendent. They ended up going with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They remitted funds for that. There were over 20 resumes that were received. Seventeen of them were in-state, three of them were out-of-state. There were no internal candidates that came forward for that superintendent role. There was a cross-section committee that was comprised of 13 members. They screened them. Nine resumes were sent forward as semifinalists. We had our own town manager as part of that process. We had a school committee member, a finance commanding member, a member of the Board of Selectmen. We had our current town moderator. We had several parents, several staff members. And we had our director of human resources and finance for the schools. When they ended up picking the three finalists, they ended up visiting all of their districts to meet with all the personnel that they were currently working with. And then they also invited them into the town of Wilmington. And then there were surveys that were sent out to all the town leadership team within Wilmington to get feedback on the three candidates. And it's my understanding that the finalists, the three of them, Ms. Delai performed far and above the other two choices. And it was a very easy decision to appoint her as our school superintendent. Who would ever know, 27 months later, that we would be dealing with unfortunate circumstances? But I have to say that this school committee that put Ms. Delai in place, and maybe it's not the same composition as then as it is now, these people are volunteered elected members in the town that I believe are fulfilling their obligations of what they were elected to do. And they went with the best information and the best resources that they had at the time, and these weren't arbitrary decisions. It didn't work out. There were unfortunate circumstances, and we did lose teachers for a myriad of different reasons. I personally am not in the walls of schools and in school-related meetings on a regular basis, but I have faith in the people that we have in our leadership team and on our school committee that they made the best decisions with the information that they had at the time. So I just, I'm not challenging you word for word, but I just feel that it needs to be stated that there was a full public process to put our past superintendent in place. And I suspect and know confidently that there will be a full process to put our new superintendent in place. And I just feel as an elected member and a former member of the school committee, I've been in those shoes, and it has not been an easy time for people that have been involved. There are policies and procedures that need to be upheld and followed. There's confidentiality for personnel matters, which is important. And there's a legal process and a legal opinion of our school attorney that they needed to heed to as well. And whether you like somebody or don't like someone, they're a human being, and someone needs to carry on with their life to the best of their ability. And under the most unfortunate circumstances, I choose to look into the future, have some compassion, and feel better about the fact that we're moving in the right direction now, and learn from this and move on. So I'm hoping that we can bring this subject matter to a close.
I know, Judy, you can't, I understand. You can't look into a crystal ball, see what happens 27 months ago. And I totally agree. I'm going backwards. I'm looking 18 months to 24 months. And the resume might have been fantastic, but here you have an individual who's the highest-paid employee in the town. That says something. And I can't believe for a moment that no one received any phone calls Sunday. This was all over social media. I got several phone calls pertaining to this. I'm not even talking about the drunk driving. I'm not even talking about Ms. Alteri. I'm going back relative to what she's done and comments that she's made. You know, we were in this room. You know, I'm not, I have to touch upon that. But, you know, I understand nobody's perfect in life. I understand that. But, you know, it just bothers me to think that, you know, I can't fathom, believe that no one's received a phone call Sunday. I'm sure folks has, you know? And I can't believe for a moment that nobody even knew that this even happened back on August 25th for a member of the school committee. Can't fathom, believe that for a moment, you know?
Knowing the people that are on the school committee, I have every faith that there is absolutely no question to the best of my knowledge. I would, I would say for every single elected member on that school committee, if they had that information, I believe emphatically they would have come forward. I believe that implicitly, absolutely.
And I understand, the woman's gone, I understand.
I think we should, we should move to bring your comments to a close.
But one thing we'd like to say is, you know, even though she's gone, I mean, we have to look at past practices. I'd love to make a motion and instruct the town manager to take a look and audit the books to see how much time she was in the district and how many times she's outside. And what do we cost for these special trips that she's taken? I've heard she's taken many. I'd like to make that in form of a motion, that maybe in the future when we hire the next superintendent, that there's more accountability. I don't think there was a lot of accountability at the Roman House when this woman went to all these trips. I really don't, you know? And I'd like to make that as a motion.
I believe that your motion is out of order in the sense that it's not within the town manager's purview of roles and responsibility to audit the school department. I think it's a matter that needs to be taken up through, you know, the school department. If you want to speak to town council and take this offline for a future endeavor, I certainly don't want to, you know, stall your options. But I don't even feel that that motion is in order for this board to take.
All right, Madam Chair, and I'll end it. Jeff, you're the chief fiscal officer. Maybe I'm not wording it right, or maybe I'm not within my realm here. What can you do as the chief fiscal officer under the town manager? You do all the hiring and firing. What do we do on this?
Well, let me just be clear. So in terms of my role, the personnel that are on the general government side of the equation, if you will, which is the department's exclusive of the school department, that's correct. I am responsible for hiring those individuals and, if necessary, terminating them. When it comes to anyone in the school department, whether there be teachers, or aides, or cafeteria personnel, or support staff, those individuals are hired by the superintendent of schools, and the superintendent in turn is hired by the school committee. So, you know, there is a clear delineation of authority there in terms of responsibilities.
All right, I think I know what I need to do, but let me just ask, is she the highest-paid employee in the town of Wilmington superintendent? What's your mean, what, $150,000?
I would have to check the records. I don't have that on hand.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, that's good, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Shampoo?
Yeah, I feel compelled. I'll be painfully brief on this subject. I just feel like I need to chime in on it. Maybe I don't, but I'm gonna anyway. I think at the end of the day, I applaud and commend the school committee and Ms. Delai for the end result that came out of the executive session in which she resigned. I don't know what the nature of the conversation was that, in that executive session for several hours. I know that I was anxious to hear about the conclusion of it and hear the announcement at the end. I think the sequence of events and the circumstances are tremendously unfortunate for her, as well as for the town, as for the kids. I'm an elected official in town, but I'm also a parent, and I have two kids in the high school. And I was passionate and disappointed, to say the least, when this news became available. And so I think from a very, very dark cloud that surrounds the circumstances of Ms. Delai's departure will hopefully come a silver lining in that, you know, the school department can go through, or the school committee can go through the exercise of identifying a new superintendent who can start us on another new path. And I think we should be focusing. I know I am excited and looking forward to our community embracing that and identifying a new candidate and having that individual become an integral part of the Wilmington school community and put us on a new path. So for me, I think it's looking forward. We have the regrettable past, but we can't change the past. We can only learn from it and move forward. So I'm excited about this moving forward component. And I do, in fact, wish Mary well. I, you know, I got to know her a little bit through the last year and a half. I didn't work with her personally in the school department,